Okay. Go ahead and bring the council meeting to order. I'd like to first ask everyone to stand and join in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and every interest or all.
Thank you. The others, can you please do your roll call?
Craig Koshak.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Phonkam.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Wiley Surt.
Here.
Okay, we're all getting a chance to read the minutes from the previous meeting on March 7th.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as emailed.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Okay. First of all, we have some, you council members in here. You guys, I know some of you have been here more than once, or before, or more than once. Would you mind introducing yourselves?
I'm Miranda Conover, Mayor of Madison.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Roderick, so I'm straight from the other side of town.
Can I play you a little bit of the song, my dad is Michael?
Okay. All right, thank you guys. And we had a mayor's youth council meeting at 6:45 this morning, so it's been a long day for these students. Okay, first of all, we have an event application for Safe Carnival. I think Jamie's gonna bring that up.
Yes, so the application is for the Safe Family Carnival, and it's what has been held at the Riverside Center in the past. And the ladies are here behind me, so if they want to jump in and explain anything else, they can. But it's for April 29th, and it's on the Madison Street Plaza. It starts at 1 o'clock and it ends at 3. They're expecting around 200 to 300 people to attend. And the restrooms will be used, the electricity and sound system, and I have all of their paperwork and all of the signatures. They are requesting to close First Street because there's gonna be police car, UTV, and the fire truck out, and then just for safety of everybody parking and getting to the plaza. But, everything back down.
Sounds like a great event. I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Okay. Thank you. So again, we have some special guests with us tonight. Do you guys want to stand up and introduce yourselves? I see one shaking his head. We're gonna read a proclamation for Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. It's April this year. So, do you guys want to say anything while you're here, before I read the proclamation?
We appreciate everybody's support. Watch me get some awareness, so.
Yep. No, this is a great cause that you guys are involved with, and we thank you guys all for year after year continuing to fight the fight. Appreciate it. Okay, so a proclamation. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a community condition and problem, and finding solutions depends on involvement among people in the community. Whereas the effects of child abuse and neglect are felt by whole communities and need to be addressed by the entire community. Whereas Prevent Child Abuse Indiana and SAFE in Adams County are sponsoring several events throughout the month to heighten public awareness of prevention in communities around the state. These events will provide information and materials that support families to avoid maltreatment and celebrate people who work with and support children and families. And whereas a statewide Pennywheels for Prevention campaign has been launched through the media, public schools, libraries, social service agencies, and businesses during the month of April to celebrate and bring awareness of the great potential of all children in Indiana and the need to strengthen all families with support and nurturing. And whereas the Pennywheels for Prevention campaign includes the planting of pennywheel gardens statewide, celebrating community partnerships for strengthening the family and protecting all children from abuse and neglect. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas all citizens should become more aware of the power of prevention within the community and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe, nurturing environment. Now therefore, I, Daniel O. Rickert, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in Decatur, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse and thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. Signed this 21st day of March 2023, Daniel O. Rickert, Mayor, City of Decatur. Again, thank you guys for your work at Chigil. We appreciate it. Thank you. You guys are welcome, but Sarah has to stay. Sarah stays. You can stay for the party, or you guys can head out. Thank you guys so much.
Sarah was having no party.
She was drunk. She was drunk. Okay. In the Board of Works meeting previously, I made a matter of record retirement letter of Nan Ever. She's been with the Parks Department for 50 years now. I said in that meeting that I'd remember going to Tumbling Pops at the old annex down on, well, it'd be Fifth and Adams Street. And Nan was the instructor. When I was.
Lincoln Elementary?
Yep. Lincoln School. The second floor, where they had the trampolines and everything in there, so. That was a couple of years ago. But, you know, she's been a hard worker in our Parks Department, and you know, with just a great positive attitude in there. So we thank her for that. She wrote a letter just saying that she enjoyed working for Parks and Recs for the last 50 years and wants to thank the city for giving her the opportunity to serve the city and its residents. She has learned so much from all the outstanding young adults that she's had the privilege to work alongside. She will miss working with family and all the participants in park programs, which have become her friends. And just said, let her know if there's anything she can do to help and be a part of in retirement. So, we thank Nan for all her dedication to the city and the Parks Department, and all the kids of our community. I can't tell you, I can't imagine how many kids she's touched through that program. So, we already made it a matter of record in the Board of Work, right? Okay. Okay. So we have to introduce some ordinance, the ingress, egress, and the new subdivisions. Kurt, are you gonna talk about this, or? Are you gonna read the, oh?
I can talk about it. So Jeff Sheets and Kurt, Josh Zimmerman, in fact, I think several of the department heads had gotten together several months ago to kind of discuss how developments were being handled, subdivisions coming into the community, and making sure that there was appropriate access for fire and safety, and just trying to make future development as safe as possible. And this was possibly initiated with a couple of existing developments that are looking to expand and only having one point of access. And it was determined that there may need to be some changes to our zoning code with regard to planned subdivisions. And so, after consideration and work and looking at other communities' ordinances, Ordinance 2023-5 was put together and presented to Plan Commission earlier today. They had an opportunity to discuss and talk with Jeff Sheets and Kurt. And Plan Commission did approve for recommendation to council the ordinance as submitted. And what it really proposes is that for subdivisions with lots between 1 and 49 lots would need to have a minimum of 1 ingress egress to a main arterial system of the city. So, one of our main connector roads, and not just cul-de-sacs and dead ends within the subdivision itself. Then, for 49, or I'm sorry, for 50 to 99, it would have 2 points of ingress egress. 100 to 150 or 149, 3 ingress egress roads, and 150 and up would have 4 ingress egress roads. So, where this is situated within the zoning code, it does require renumbering of other sections within that. But the primary focus of the ordinance is the addition of a new section that would make a requirement for a minimum number of connector roads to the city's main arterial road system.
So how is this different from what our current ordinance is then?
Currently, we don't have the requirement for how many ingress or egress.
Oh, so there is, there's no requirement at all?
There is none. This will give us some drift now. My dealings with past contractors on subdivisions, to be honest with you, they really don't want to put any more than they have to.
Right.
Costs money.
Right.
But this one here, I have great news, there's only 1 inlet, 1 outlet. If emergency responders have to respond to either one of these houses here, where my house, my dresser's at, that's gonna shut down this whole street back there. They won't be able to get in or out until whatever issue.
Yeah, if there was some kind of emergency that.
Correct. Another one, the out Meadows. You know, Meadows kinda, you know, that's a pretty good sized subdivision. Right now, getting to Hogan Valley, Tiger's Trail, from this point, there's just 1 location there. What happens if we have first responders in this area here? Nobody back there is getting home, nobody's getting out. Yeah. This is a little aggressive, but we would rather have aggressive on, and be able to, because we're gonna run into subdivisions where they're gonna have issues. Getting, meeting these requirements, unplanned commissions, and they can sit back and digest and think, and then back off. I would rather be over aggressive on this, be able to back off, be under aggressive and try and fight for one later.
Yeah, I'll get it.
Developer could appeal. You're saying the developer could appeal?
Copy, I wanna read a copy. I see that.
There's no appeal program. It's Plan Commission, that's what Plan Commission does. They review all new flats, all new, planned levels. If they bring it in front of Plan Commission, say, look, we physically can't get, we've got 152 lots and we physically can't get 4, and it can prove why the Plan Commission can take this from there and see what can be done. Are we gonna be good with 3? Is there a way we can reroute over here, maybe get rid of 1 lot? It falls in Plan Commission's hands.
Are there planned subdivisions this'll impact?
No. Anything that's established at this point, his grandfather did. A good one would be, oh, Bell Farms. Bell Farms, I don't think there's physically any way to get 4 into that subdivision just because of the parkery along Bellmont Road. They might be able to get 3, 2 coming off Pickway and 1 off Bellmont Road. This came up several months ago, a developer actually, Karen Murden, that's where we started, we had a lot of this. And we use, very amusing, a private template. Just, Kurt, keep it pulling back up. For example, if there's an issue. If there were to be an issue here, lot 2, what's lot 2, is where the cul-de-sac goes back. You'd have to close that street. Say it's a day, say it's a week. Say it's whatever. How are these people gonna get back out?
Right. Yeah.
You know, if we have a house fire in here or something tragic, how's people gonna get out? How's people gonna get back in? You know, and at the same time, if we have something going on here, you know, say back there in the back, at the end of your score, someone has heart attack, called 911, we can't get ambulance back there. So it's more of a safety thing, and it's also, you have to look at this as a part of the city. You know, so it's, where we come up with this, probably like 6 months ago, 7 months or more. There's just, there's far more pros to this than what there is, you know, cons. We just need a little bit of support to looking forward. You know, how are we gonna address this?
You have any thoughts on this, Dan? No, I just think, you know, like they said, there's gonna, there's going to be some sections you can't get 4.
I was a little apprehensive when they were at the Plan Commission and proposed this, thinking 4 is a lot of exits in a subdivision where they can't get 4. But Kurt does have a good point, if it is that situation, that will allow the Plan Commission to say, okay, it's not possible. Because I don't want to stop the growth of the community by saying, hey, you can't put a subdivision in here if you can't get 4 outlets, but.
Right.
I see where he's coming from, making it stronger and then asking for variance, basically.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2023-5 on its first reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign.
Ordinance 2023-5, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Decatur, which amends Chapter 154 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015, is supplemented for the purpose of establishing subdivision ingress egress standards to be included in plans and specifications submitted for the purpose of obtaining final plot approval by Plan Commission.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-5 on its first reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote.
Craig Koshak.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Phonkam.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yes. Make a motion to place ordinance 2023-5 on its second reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign.
Ordinance 2023-5, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, which amends Chapter 154 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015, is supplemented for the purpose of establishing subdivision ingress egress standards to be included in plans and specifications submitted for the purpose of obtaining final plot approval by Plan Commission.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-5 on its, yeah, on its second reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote.
Craig Koshak.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Phonkam.
Yes.
Scott Murray. Wiley Surt.
Yes. I'll make a motion to table ordinance 2023-5 for its third reading, which would be held on April 4th.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Okay, table from next meeting. Did you have anything else for council meeting? Anything else? Forward heads. Jeremy?
Spring heavy trash is coming up, even the week of April 10th. Same rules apply as normal. Electronics, no construction material. It's a good opportunity to clean up around your home, but also be kind and courteous to the workers. We've had several stops over the years to where it seems like the people are just opening up the front door and throwing stuff out into the front yard. There's a lot of loose stuff out there, there's a lot of stuff that floats away, floats around. If we come onto that, we're gonna do the best we can to get it picked up. We can't guarantee that you're gonna get it all. Try to keep everything bagged as best you can, or vacuumed up. Makes our life a whole lot easier, and just makes everything a whole lot easier, cleaner. More efficient to get it done. Other than that, there's a lot of little things going on, a lot of things weather permitting at this point. Last weekend, obviously, we had a little dust snow, so that slowed up some progress and some planning, but a lot of good things coming here for a couple of projects, it's gonna make a big difference this summer.
Kevin. Kevin, Kevin H.
The next few weeks, we have to leave some water main work beginning on Elm Street between Line and Winchester, which is called, we call it South List Street, Elm Street, tone and dim light. It's gonna be basically a total, total new vein. And then there are any old services that are through that, we'll try to pick up and replace those also. I think the plan is eventually new sidewalks, new streets also through there, I guess in the next round. So we're gonna try and get everything done on time, and all that should start here in the next couple of weeks. So it'll be, then we pour up for a while, but it'll be.
So it'll be a mess for a little while. Construction is progress, right? Yep. Okay. Chief Gerber.
I think so.
Okay. Jamie, you going in?
Nothing.
Kurt?
Want me to say anything about the room upstairs?
Uh, yeah, you can read up.
I'd like to see if I can get the permission to come in there, one of the rooms upstairs, I'm considering. We're supposed to try it out. I've had comments from other people in the building about the possibility of a fitness center in the building. When I got married, my wife had no idea that I came with about 1,000 pounds of excess baggage in the form of exercise equipment, free weights, and cages. And by far, that was not allowed to come home. So it's in my dad's basement, collecting dust, and we have some space upstairs. I wouldn't mind taking one of the small offices and turning it into kind of a weight room, exercise physical room. But chances are, you can get permission to come in.
I can see how the, could be promoting wellness, which we most definitely need to do that. Why are you looking at me, Wiley? Just asking. Anyway, who would be using this?
Anybody in the building, council to use it.
Scott? So is it gonna? You can get in line. Yeah. No, it's just bad.
I mean, I've got Olympic weights that.
So when would this be available?
As soon as I.
No, I meant like, like hours.
Get a key to the back door?
No. I didn't know if you're gonna open it. How are you going to manage this facility for all the workers of the City of Decatur, I guess is my quest, is my question. I think we should probably figure that out first. So, I don't know either. Is that a good idea? Yeah, I think the initial thoughts were just, some people go and walk on their lunch break and after work, and he thought he had some stuff that could use here, and it's an empty room, and could we use it for employees to use it at lunch, or after work, or whatever? I'm not opposed to it.
But figuring out the functionality and probably risk management and accessibility and.
Liability and.
Mm-hmm. There's some, there's a decent number of questions involved that I can talk with you, I can talk with you. I can maybe report back next meeting.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Sounds like a plan.
Grab some rules.
All right. Like I said, it's just collecting dust, if it doesn't go through, it's not gonna do. I just figured sitting there, and some people in the building have said something about possibly going out upstairs.
Right.
I've got the equipment, I don't mind sharing it, if you need to use, may help.
And I think someone else mentioned bringing the treadmill in here too, that they had, that they weren't using. I mean, it does, people like on lunch, lunch hour, or not actually leaving the building and so forth. I mean, that's, if you look at Sweetwater, all of the amenities that he has there for his employees. I'm not suggesting we need to do that, but, I mean, even. Wait for a second. Barber and, you know, salon and so forth. Capital, yeah. Barber too, again. Okay, so we'll look into it a little more? All right. Thanks, Kurt. Josh?
Oh, good.
Okay. One thing, while we're talking about that in the room, I'm going to ask for permission to use the office that's right over here as an office space for the Mayor's Youth Council. Mishawaka, I was at a mayor's roundtable in Mishawaka last month, and that was something that they did, and I thought it was a great idea. He, I think, well, our plan is to apply for a grant to the community foundation to get a laptop in there, and then all the, the students can come in there, because right now, we have a list of projects, and today they start signing up for which projects they want to be on and what they want to help with, and this'll give them a space to work. But also in the summertime, when they're out and about, if they want to grab a coffee across the street, come over here, a place to hang out, and they want to work on these projects.
A worker space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I know I talked to some of the employees at City Hall in Mishawaka, and they said it's really cool to see the students in there and working together and working on projects.
Kind of like a, could end up being like a little nick.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's true.
And right now, it's just a, it was Melissa's old office, it's kind of a catch-all, and it's something that we could actually make it a productive room.
What he uses is a drink, and well, Brett, Brett and I, when we get to take a testing, we can't go anywhere to take that test anymore, it has to be over the internet.
Right, it has to be quiet.
It has to be quiet, and he's gonna literally pick up a laptop or a camera and show the whole room before they'll just take the test. So, we don't work through county or trying to get us hooked up. That room is a big, a good room for that as well.
Yeah. So that's, when, how often is that? Do you guys have those tests?
As fast as we can learn material. Last test I took was probably 2 years ago.
Yeah, it could be used for that too, so.
Looking for permission to be able to use that for. I'll make a motion for permission to use that for. Yeah.
Second.
Motion is second, any more discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side. Okay, thank you. Um, Phyllis? Anne?
I kind of want to thank Nan. I didn't appreciate, like Nan Everett, I did not appreciate that she had been here for 50 years and, um, I know you mentioned tumbling tops and gymnastics and I certainly had those long with slim lessons and just about any other kind of introductory or introduction to sports. And the thousands of kids that she's, you know, helped create a passion for competition, for sport, for, or just, um, you know, being able to make friends and buying a way, finding a way to engage with the community. So that's a, that's an impressive career. That's, um, what a wonderful gift to our community. So thank you to her.
And she always remembered everybody and was so kind her whole life.
Yeah.
Any from Council?
I have a couple of things. One is just wanted to bring, you know, again, I know it's been publicized, but our Decatur being part of the micro policy recognition on that list of top 100 and all of the, the work that's going on here in Decatur and promotion of industry and businesses. It was just nice to have that recognition.
Yep.
And also I don't know if people noticed that out just north of town, the metal source that just opened. There's sculpture of that transformer. I don't know how tall that is, 20, 30 feet high? That's really kind of a cool thing. It's.
The root or something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I was neat to see that. And how they have just totally cleaned up that area. It's 200% better than what it used to be.
Yep. I bet they'll get some business the week of April 10th. Yeah.
Yeah.
That metal source out there, they'll be most.
Uh, yeah, it's nice, yeah.
Anyone else?
Uh, WZBD has basically given up the Easter egg hunt on the Saturday before Easter. Uh, we at the Chamber have taken it over with the volunteers from Chamber and also Main Street. And we're gonna do the Easter egg hunt and it's gonna happen April 8th at the Riverside Center at noon for all the fun children in our city. There'll be fabulous prizes. And we're also looking for sponsors for those, for the candy and some other things, so.
What type?
At noon.
Okay, what else? Any from Public? Okay. I'll make a motion to pay the claims.
Second.
Motion to second to pay the claims. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.